In school, for school purposes. Any other comments?
None for me.
Okay. Management and operations. Environment develops and execute effective plans, procedures, routines, and operational systems to address the full range of safety, health, emotional, and social needs. It was, Mike was graded at proficient slash exemplary. Human resources implements a cohesive approach to recruiting, hiring, induction, development, and career growth that promotes high quality and effective practice. Was graded as proficient. Scheduling and scheduling and management information systems. Uses systems to ensure optimal use of data and time for teaching, learning, and collaboration. Minimizing disruptions and distractions for school level staff. Was graded as proficient. Law ethics policies understands and complies with state and federal laws and mandates. School committee policies collected bargaining agreements and ethical guidelines. And was exemplary. Fiscal systems develops a budget that supports the district's vision, mission, and goals. Allocates and manages expenditures consistent with district and school level goals and available resources. And that was graded as proficient. Now, and the overall rating was proficient. Mike is extremely knowledgeable when it comes to state and federal laws and mandates. Is consistently guiding the school committee as far as policies and laws are committed, are concerned. Mike works extremely well with town administration. And he provides a transparent view of our budget needs and requests. There is interest to continue the conversation to explore an HR department for the school district. Believe, we believe that this would help address some of the issues slash concerns that have been experienced by the staff this year. Family and community engagement. Engagement actively ensures that all families are welcome members of their classroom and school community and can contribute to the effectiveness of the classroom, school, district, and community. And he's graded as proficient. Sharing responsibility continuously collaborates with families and community stakeholders to support student learning and development at home, school, and community. And graded as proficient. Communication engages in regular two-way culturally proficient communication with families and community stakeholders about student learning and performance. Graded as proficient. Family concerns addresses family and community concerns in equitable, effective, and efficient manner. And that was graded as exemplary. Overall grade was proficient. Comments, Mike is always visible and available to all. We believe that Mike encourages and support new opportunities that support students' needs and works to create new resources in our community and off our own. Under Mike's leadership, we have added an assistant to the athletic director to focus on athletics and programming for CPS students. Mike is extremely professional when addressing family and community concerns. He is visible at numerous community and school events as well as offering superintendent coffees which are open to our district families and the general public. Professional culture. Commitment to high standards fosters a shared commitment to high standards of service teaching and learning with high expectations for achievement for all. And was graded as proficient. Cultural proficiency ensures that policies and practices enable staff members and students to interact effectively in a culturally diverse environment in which students backgrounds, identities, staff strengths, and challenges are respected. And that was graded as proficient. Demonstrates strong interpersonal written and verbal communication skills. And that was graded as exemplary. Continuous learning develops and nurtures a culture in which staff members are reflective about their practice and use student data, current research, best practices, and theory to continuously adapt practice and achieve improved results. Models these behaviors in his or her own practice. And that was great as proficient. Shared vision successfully and continuously engages all stakeholders in the creation of a shared educational vision in which every student is prepared to succeed in post-secondary education and become a responsible citizen and global contributor. And this was graded between needs improvement and proficient. Managing conflict employs strategies for responding to disagreement and dissent, constructively resolving conflict, and building consensus throughout the district or school community. And this was graded between needs improvement and proficient. The overall rating was proficient. As a district, we need to work on our shared vision and develop a strategic plan. Hopefully, with the added position of deputy superintendent and some restructuring of the administrative team, Mike will continued build solidarity amongst our leaders which will extend to all staff. Now we come to progress towards goals. Under professional practice goals, the rating was met. And there was did not meet, some progress, significant progress, met, and exceeded. Student learning goals, significant progress. District improvement goals, significant progress. The performance on the standards of instructional leadership was rated as proficient. Management and operations proficient as noted. Family and community engagement exemplary, and professional culture proficient. Overall, we think this year has been focused on bringing in a new superintendent. And maybe a few things got lost in the shuffle, i.e. the strategic plan. We now need to refocus making the plan a priority. And we need to focus on the learning experiences and assessments of the whole child. In our opinion, the district reports need to be dissected, evaluated, and the current styles of teaching reviewed. We need to do whatever it takes for us to get to the root of the problems in math. To make sure that the changes we made and are making have us on the right path to start to see the improvements we desperately need. Team building, there needs to be some coaching and professional development centered around team building. Delineating and communicating clear roles and responsibilities. Mike is very visible in the community and we know he is everywhere. His is safety of our children and our staff first and foremost in his mind and continues to make strides in improving things. With Mike orienting the new deputy superintendent, it will be very helpful in setting up, setting us up for continued success. The student, the superintendent shall provide a smooth transition for the next superintendent of schools ensuring the inaccurate evaluation of each building administrator and each department head and their program is completed and comprehensive. That was rated as met.
Tim, could I just say that's, these are the goals now that you're reading
Yeah.
that Mike set for himself.
Yeah. Student learning mathematics will continue to be a focus in the, of a, to continue to be an area of focus for the superintendent and he shall ensure that this is the priority for the building administrators and educators across the district. This was rated as some progress. The superintendent will support the social and emotional needs and learning of the district superintendents promoting programs and providing staff and resources necessary for initiatives in this sphere. And that was rated as significant progress. The superintendent will continue to promote the use of data at the building level to better analyze, interpret, and use data to ensure greater alignment of instruction to the Massachusetts frameworks. And this was graded as significant progress. The superintendent shall work proactively with facilities director and town of Nantucket capital committee to once again address space concerns in the district, particularly at the middle and high school. And this was rated as between some progress and significant progress. The superintendent shall maintain a detailed budget development process allowing for the input of staff administration and school councils and providing transparency for all constituents. That was rated as exceeded. The superintendent shall be visible and accessible to the administrative team, faculty members, students, and parents of our students. And that was, that was graded as exceeded. Does somebody have any other comments?
No.
No comments.
Steve?
No, sir.
Okay. Superintendent is the only person in the town that gets evaluated in public. So we'll move on to vote to approve the donation to Nantucket High School to the wood shop program from Rich Leoni in the amount of a thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Rich is a well beloved retired teacher. And that's a very dramatic donation. The vote of school and choice participation for the academic year 2019-2020.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
Well, we're not participating.
Sorry, I know. But does he need to read that? No, okay. Thank you. Sorry, I'm taking a real job. Move over, Tim.
Art, you've lost me.
We have a second, we haven't voted.
Yeah, do we have a second?
We have a second, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're not participating in school choice. Steve, was that your question?
Which is what?
School choices, if you're in Yarmouth and you want to go to Falmouth and they participate in the program, you can go over there.
Ah.
But since it involves a trip, it hasn't been, I think in my recollection we've had one kid that went to Cape Tech. A vote to approve in Nantucket High School overnight field trip for the diversity slash Spanish club to New York, New York, May ninth and to the 12th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Now, that's not in our package.
No, I know.
Okay. Can you make sure we get it via email? Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The March 19th, 2019 meeting minutes. Can the motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Transfers and invoices.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we have. Mike has formally recommended the name of Dr. Elizabeth Hallett to the position of deputy superintendent of schools for the Nantucket Public Schools effective July 1st, 2019. Can we have a motion to endorse his recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We're gonna, you're gonna discuss that at all?
It's in a discussion session, section.
What do you want to discuss?
Okay, actually, I wanted the public to know a few things. Not that I'm thin skinned or anything, but there were a lot of people who were concerned about the process that was in fact going on somewhat in the background for a few weeks while we tried to decide what to do. We had to do much of that in executive session. And I've cleared this with Mr. Cozart. I spoke with him of what I was gonna say. So he won't be surprised to hear it. We had to negotiate with him. Thus, the executive sessions to stay for another year. We were caught by surprise the day that we believed the top candidate backed out. And it just didn't seem right to pick somebody else that evening. As part of our negotiations with Mr. Cozart, we asked him to review the materials that we had reviewed and give us his thoughts. He had not been participating. He hadn't read references. He hadn't read the 60 pages of comments or the additional questions, et cetera. So we asked him to review that. We asked him to interview the three additional candidates who had been vetted by the search committee. And then he gave us his recommendation and was therefore willing to commit to another year. And that, you know, he'll have a one-year contract as an interim superintendent. I don't feel particularly thin-skinned, but I was surprised at how many people thought we might not be doing productive things in the background. So I just thought it was fair that, you know, what we were doing at least part of the time.
School committee never sleeps. Can we go on to enrollment? Logan?
There are four additional in the last month. And that's a very small amount of entries versus withdrawals. They are all relocation out of the country.
You said out of the country?
They're all relocated, the people that have left have relocated out of the country.
Okay.
But I thought there were four that came in, no?
Sorry?
I thought you were saying there was four that came in.
Four that came in. And I don't have the sheet in front of me. We had four additional. But between the people that, the students that left and the students that came in, it equates to four.
Okay.
So I think there was, I don't have the report, so I can't remember. But you can see the number of entries and the number of withdrawals. So it was a small change from the month prior.
What are the entries? Can, does it, can anybody explain the entries?
Those are coming from other countries. They're mostly E.
Okay.
How about the high school, John? Jim?
Continue to enroll students. Students continue to withdraw. Probably a net zero coming to home.
Are we getting requests for records and?
We're making sure there's a sending school on the other end for a receiving school on the other end.
We have to normalize a lot of those records. Guidance, guidance will stamp them that they're official records. But oftentimes I have to send an affidavit that says that what came from the guidance department is actually what's from a header requested by a parent in high school.
School calendar.
Thank you.
First draft. Mr. Cozart wanted everybody to have a glimpse. Other than the districts that we know have let it publish anything, but we did poke around a little bit.
I have a question. I'd like to see graduation date as a date on this calendar. Has that request ever been made before? And if not, I'm making it now. I just think it's an important date that you could schedule around.
Agreed.
Well, yeah, because we have the first day of kindergarten. It would be nice to have the last day of the seniors and graduation. That would be nice.
But remember, this is 2020.
I understand that.
Okay. So we have time to.
Do that.
Get that in, Logan.
Sure. We do put that on the refrigerator to more drafts, so I'll ask Mr. Cozart.
Yeah, I mean, and it's on the website. So we can stick it on there and people can print it out from there. That's my only comment other than that.
It is late because of the way Labor Day falls.
Uh huh.
Yeah. Yeah, because I was looking at last day of school and it's like, yikes, it's almost to the end of June.
Well, it'd be nice if we don't have much snow that winter.
Yeah, not one more.
Like this year.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We usually have a professional develop day on the Friday before Columbus weekend. It's not in there on this draft.
Could be, he, you know, some of the things were just sort of copied from the year prior to a similar date.
Okay.
So they could, they probably can live a bit here and there.
An election day is a PD day, so it would be closed for students.
Is it there?
It is November 3rd.
Mm-hmm.
So there's four PD days on there. And that's our max, right?
The three to begin with or the four to begin with.
Yeah, five.
And then five.
Well, we can bring those questions up to Mike. Subcommittee?
Um, policy's met. And did everyone notice our new cover sheet?
Yes.
Yes, I did notice that.
I did notice.
Okay, good news. One, one mentioned, Paulie, didn't we talk about having our names, our position, and our emails on the front of this?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that.
It's a Zona, but yeah, yes.
Sorry, sorry, Zona, I'm sorry. This is weird, sorry, I was looking at you. So I wanted to just double check with you, Zona, before.
It's okay.
Mike changes this, but we thought it was important to have a cover page with our names, our positions, and our email addresses. So everyone can keep in touch with us.
And this will be on an every agenda.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
You want to post an email address?
No, whatever's listed on the website.
Yeah. Yeah, whatever is listed on the website, if that's okay, thank you. And then our mission statement, we talked about this and we thought it was important to include that on the cover. And we also thought that it was important that the school committee has the same mission statement as our district. That we are one and the same. So we will see this every time we look at our packet. We learn, grow, and care through relevance and relationships. So there will be no confusion when we fill out our self-evaluation next year.
Plus, we will be doing a.
Oh, yeah, we, sorry, do you want to talk about that?
No, you go ahead.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Zona. So we also spoke about doing a workshop for the next meeting on April 23rd. Have Pastor Jim Hardy come and discuss school committee meeting protocols as a reminder and discuss the committee's self-evaluation. And work together on developing a survey for the public that we had discussed at the last meeting. Based on our self-evaluation.
I'm just thinking it would be helpful to have had the survey for when we meet.
We decided it was important that we all are included with coming up with the questions for the survey. And not just Zona and myself.
Yeah, we can have a.
I just think that it's kind of like we're, we're gonna sit there and we're gonna talk, but we still don't have the information that I was trying to gather beforehand, which is from the community. Because then, then we could talk about that in our discussion.
I think we should have another workshop. I don't think one workshop is gonna be enough.
I agree. I think it's important for us all to discuss the questions that we think we need answers to from the community instead of just my perspective or Zona's perspective.
I agree, I just don't know that we need a workshop for that. I think we could do it through email, but I'm, I'm fine. I just, you think we need two workshops to discuss?
I think as many workshops as we can have is important. I really do.
On our self-evaluation?
Not on our self-evaluation, just in general, the operations of our school committee.
Okay, I, yeah, so do we need Jim then?
Yes.
At that, at that particular, do we need him for the second meeting?
Well, it's twofold. I mean, we're also gonna talk about our meeting protocols. And then hopefully he can give us some insight on some questions that we can share. We can ask if any other districts do this and what kind of questions they ask and.
You know, we're, we're working on an agenda for the workshop. So Jen is not listing everything, but we talked with Mike about several things. One of the things is that we wanted to review some tapes and things like that. So I think Mike would be better to explain what, what we are thinking about for the first workshop. I think that's important. It's in the law, it's, it's involved, for lack of a better word.
Since that workshop is in lieu of our April meeting, when is Mike going to be describing these things to us?
He can do that via email.
Yeah.
There'll be an organizational meeting next Wednesday.
Right.
Next Wednesday? Oh, okay.
Even though things aren't gonna change, but.
We have to decide if you'd like to do it in the morning or in the afternoon or you want to do it. It should be Wednesday. And Jim is confirmed on the 23rd, just.
Thank you.
When would you choose to do it?
Let me check my schedule, if you don't mind.
I can do any time after 8:00 AM. Can't get here before eight. I know you like to get here early.
It may not be good with me, though, sorry. If I get behind my schedule. I'll have to get back to you. I just don't know.
Well, it's just a question whether we do it at eight o'clock or do it in the afternoon.
Yeah. I'll, I'll check and let you know.
I'm good up until or before 2:30 that day. And then I'm not good until, I'm gonna say six.
Like your chairman. Meetings at three.
So we may be able to do it noon, maybe. Is that, could you?
Yeah, no, noon's great.
You, right?
Yeah.
Steve, could you do noon?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would feel comfortable, comfortable with noon. I just don't know about.
And where will we do it?
Central office.
Okay.
Is that work first or is it?
Yeah, yeah.
Can I just add on these workshops? That I think we're in need, not so much of a second one of these. We certainly don't need Mr. Hardy for a second one of these.
No, we know.
But I think we are in need before summer of a workshop on technology that hopefully could have some parents attending, some staff attending who are involved in the use of our computers, the network, et cetera, et cetera. I think there are some outstanding issues that we need to talk about. And I was kind of hoping that we could do that in May. I, it's easy for me to say, being retired, that we should not do all these workshops in lieu of regular meetings, that we should do them in addition to if we can. Something to think about.
Yeah, absolutely, I totally agree.
I agree with that, yeah. Another comment, Tom Dixon has reached out to me several times. Representative Fernandez and Senator Seer coming for May 7th. And they really would like to come to our school committee meeting, talk about what's happening on Beacon Hill, and hear about our local needs, concerns, and what's happening in our district. So if we could add that to the agenda on May 7th.
Can I ask you, what on May 7th is the ILT report?
Instructional.
Instructional.
N-I-S-N-E-S initiative this year, instructional learning.
With Donna Johnson? Okay, thank you.
I think that there still needs to be some work done on that, like to solicit the feedback from participants. And nothing's been, I'm part of ILT and we've not done anything but the work we do.
Should we move that back a little bit then?
I think you certainly, not that I want to tell you what to do, but I think you certainly have room to move that back. I would think that there should be conversations with all ILT participants and members and.
Yeah, because I think we've talked about inviting the teachers as well as Donna to come to that, so.
But to create a report, I would think that some feedback needs to be gathered in the end in order to give that to you in a packet and.
You think? I think we agree with that.
Yeah.
So, okay, so maybe, maybe May 21st, move that, ILT.
Is that?
And then that would free up time for Fernandez and Senator to come to, and then May 7th, Seer.
No, that makes sense.
Perfect. Thank you, I can let them know.
Okay, so 23rd of April then is going to be the four o'clock workshop. And that's when Jim's coming.
Yes.
And that's to talk about our questions for the survey, for the community.
Yeah.
Yes, and also to discuss our meeting protocols.
Okay.
To make sure we are following protocol and reminder.
Okay.
So we're in line.
Yes.
Moving forward in a positive way.
Good with that.
Okay.
Learning, growing every day.
That's right.
Can we have a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Yes, so moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, everybody in town meeting.
Yeah.
Does that really say 6:35?
Well, you can get up to town meetings, Steve.
Oh, that's, I made the suggestion, I like to.
No, with what's left to be discussed, thank you very much. I've got a wicked shot, but the N I S administrators and Mike and these guys aren't here, so I'll reserve it for the next time.
I don't know why I thought you. That's really the goal, is to make sure we're all.
No, I didn't mean to trip you up on that, I just didn't know that.
Oh, no, no.
I didn't mean to go over your tape.
Got to do this today. Next time you can put your fingers on it, no rush.
All right, let me.
The final version of Mike's evaluation.
Bad knee, I don't, they don't know what's wrong with it, but it gets worse every day.
I don't think so, the version we have has been on about. I was on it.
Is it swollen?
Yes, sometimes it does, but I feel like muscle or tendon is like scraping over the bone and clicking sometimes, you know?
But what he was reading, it's stuff that was not in, pointing at the computer and not the paper.
So look at me.
So they have an electronic. Okay.
And we should all hand our individual ones in to you.